So after tonight. I'm able to talk more morning. He says, yeah.
Well, I said, I said that was good.
I interpreted the message that you said.
So they've started.
I don't know if they have, but the conversations have been going as if we're really sorry.
Well, good.
What are they physically actually engaged?
That means they.
They're at least thinking about it.
Yeah, they think we're supposed to.
Hi. Okay, I can't remember. You said no Josh. Oh, it's okay. He's kind of an interesting character. Seems good, I think we might want to double check a couple of references before we see what they are. Everybody weird compared to you, Nick. There's just a certain interesting quality about him. I wouldn't say that. Anyway, it's all. No, I don't get that feeling. He seems to have a lot of good experience. Yeah, that's, I guess that's all right. Looked like, with like eighties hair. He might be in the wrong.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. I will call the Planning Commission hearing for June 13th, 2018 to order. We have only one item we'll be hearing on the agenda this evening. We had two, but item two has been continued. Item one is an administrative item, and so the Planning Commission will make a recommendation for approval or disapproval on that item. Before we start, I will ask Mr. Anderson to lead us in prayer, and Mr. Rowan in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Want to catch him off guard?
Sorry.
Is your mic on?
Father in heaven, we're very grateful to be here this evening. We're grateful to live in a wonderful community. We're grateful for all the blessings we enjoy as residents of Provo, and pray that all the blessings tonight that we will be able to act in the best interest of all that live here and all that work here and spend time in Provo. And again, thank thee for all that we've been given and say these things, humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and before we read in our first item, I'd like the Commissioners to state their name in case they have a conflict of interest.
Dave Anderson, no conflict.
Deborah Jensen, no conflict.
Jay Monroe, no conflicts.
Edward Jones, no conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Thank you. Right, our first item and only item for this evening. Item one, Josh Godfrey requests project plan approval for a 68-unit apartment building with one commercial unit located at 480 North Freedom Boulevard in the general downtown DT1 zone. That's the downtown neighborhood. Aaron Ardmore will present this item.
Okay, thank you. So first, just the general area that we're looking at. We've got the rec center up here, this is Smith's Grocery. So they own the old front center here, and then the parcels behind it that run between Fifth North and Fourth North. The plan is to demolish the buildings onsite and to create an apartment building. So the parcels to the east would become parking and drive access, and then this is where the building will be. As you can see, here's proposed is the city standard park strip and sidewalk. Then they've got an additional eight feet between the sidewalk and the front of the building here along Freedom Boulevard to give a little bit more space before you have the building and with residential units there. That gives them some private space as well. We will go through the floor plans real quick. So our main floor, we've even got, on the southwest corner, you've got some retail space. They have one retail space, and then a lot of their amenity area is here as well on the ground floor with lobby space and offices, conference table. Then you've got four units here on the first floor and the beginning of the parking garage. Second story is entirely parking garage with some bike storage and other amenity space there. The third floor is all residential units around the street-facing sides. Then you've got a large courtyard here where I was sent details of that courtyard space earlier today. I'll get that up in a minute. And then above that, the fourth, fifth, and sixth levels are kind of repeated with those apartments and then just open to the below courtyard. The elevation, that's, can you bring over the PDF? So we received these today. As you can see in your staff report, the Design Review Committee has some conditions, and one of those was that they tried to line up the doors below and the windows with the windows above, try to line those up a little bit more than the first version they saw. So this was sent to me today trying to achieve that. If we can go to the next page. Not too much to change in there. Go down a couple more pages. Right here, so you can see detail for the courtyard there for their large outdoor amenity space of what they kind of propose conceptually there. And go again till we get to the elevations. Thank you. So we've got the elevations here with, here's your retail space on the southwest corner. Then there's the residential units entries, the main corner entry there, and then the lobby and leasing space entries there. If we could go back to the PowerPoint now. And down the, there we go. Okay, a major portion, a major part of this project, which is somewhat new to the seat, I think you've seen one of these before, is the TDM program. Here specifically, it was detailed in your staff report, but I'll just quickly go over it. On the standard required parking for the type of units they have, they have 46 one-beds, 22-beds, and one three-bed unit. That would typically require 85 and a half parking spaces, so 86 parking spaces. What they are providing, proposing to provide is 81, so just five or six below what that standard would be. They're doing that with this TDM program. And they're doing that through a more robust bicycle amenity, so inside storage, repair station, storage on different levels of the parking deck as well. And then there you see the coupling of the rent with onsite parking fees, designated spots for carpool, and then designated spots for electric vehicle charging stations. Staff reviewed this against our standards. Believe it's a pretty reasonable request of what they're asking for. They could actually with those requirements go down to 74 and a quarter spaces, but they're going above that, they're going to 81 spaces. Again, that's only five or six below what the standard would have been. It's still 1.2 spaces per dwelling unit, which is, we believe, pretty reasonable for downtown sitting residential project. They've also, to note, they've also gone above their amenity space, required amenity space of 10%, they've gone to 13 with all of the lobby spaces and again, the outdoor courtyard. Staff supportive of this project. We think it's in a great location, right there across from the kitty corn from rec center, on Freedom Boulevard, easy access to Smith's, to downtown. It's a great project for the city. We propose that it be approved. Of course, ask, go back to Design Review Committee by their condition, but we feel like that should not be an issue going forward, and we would recommend approval on this.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ardmore from the Commissioners? Mr. Rowan?
Can you clarify for me, I don't know if you can go back to the image of the entire, yeah, so where is the potential commercial space versus lobby entrance? Can you just point it out?
Yeah, so this is the old elevation, of course, but it's in the same area. So it's this entry here in the corner. You can see it better on the floor plan. Right here, there's the retail space.
Not only northwest corner though, right?
No, southwest corner.
Southwest corner.
Yeah.
Which is curious to me.
Yeah, I have a question about that too, and it seems like the most natural place for a thriving commercial would be right on the corner. Maybe we can talk more about that and hear from you why you decided to do what you did in the end. I just want to make sure I understood that. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Ardmore? If not, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and speak to this item. And please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name's Josh Godfrey. Push the button.
Let's try it again. Technical difficulties.
The light's not coming on either way.
There's, oh.
There we go.
That seems like it's on now.
Yeah, you're good.
Josh Godfrey, good evening. Aaron did a good job at explaining the project. I'll just mention a few items. One of the items that was mentioned just recently was the corner space. Retail can, it's pretty important that you have the right tenant in place. We are in talks with someone for that retail space, and hopefully that will move forward. But we wanted, we see more of the retail moving more south than north. The neighbor is in works of working on a project that will have additional retail as well as all pegs projects that are south, and you have Smith's. And we, so we see kind of retail moving more south and then more north being residential. So that was one of the reasons we're open to different ideas. If you, you know, if you have a suggestion of, you know, how to make this project better, then we're totally open to hear from you on that. But that's kind of our reasoning of why we went that way. We weren't sure if we were going to do more office or more like a bakery type setup in that retail space. So if we wanted office, then we felt like office would be better also on the south side than on that corner.
I don't know if now's the time, I mean, it just seems to me that you have a much more appealing space there in the corner, much more exposure. I mean, you have exposure on Freedom and exposure on 500 North. I mean, if, this is easy for me to say because I'm not a business owner, and so you may have in conversations said, hey, which, you know, if you were to choose a space, which one would you want? It just seems to me that the, that the most appealing would be the one situated right on the corner. I mean, south is not, businesses being south is not that much. I mean, you get, you'd have visibility from the rec center, all the people that traffic there if you're situated around the corner that you wouldn't have perhaps just, again, it's hard for me to envision how far south this, is it like half a block that this space takes up? That's my thinking, I don't know, Dave, if you had other things to add.
But yeah, access and visibility are the two things that'll drive, I think, most tenants to make decisions about where they go. And obviously, visibility on the corner is going to be the best. So unless there's something related to the access that's closer to the middle of the block that, that might trump that.
Yeah, we're also looking a little bit about parking, and retail's already hard to make viable in a project like this. Hence why we only have one retail space. It'd be nice if all our buildings could have retail on the bottom and they were all filled with awesome tenants, but it is, it is hard to do. But if you see, there's a sidewalk along that south side by the retail, we think that's more of a direct access for parking, as well as we've worked with the neighbor next door, and he's even open to leasing some spaces right next to our retail. So it, you know, you're literally right next to the door. So that's another reason why we chose that spot.
I have a quick question. I actually have two questions. One does concern parking, and I didn't quite catch what your statement was about retail parking. Are you accommodating retail parking?
Yes, that's, that's part of the.
Or what kind of tenant?
So that, it depends. Like I said, we don't know exactly who's going to move in there. If it becomes office space, then that's kind of day use, right? And then at night, then it'd be ideal for tenants, but we don't see a strong demand for parking in that space.
So you're not considering restaurant or?
Most likely not. Yeah, we're not, we're not engineering it for like some sort of grill or grease trap.
Okay. And then my second question concerned the elevation. I like that you're lining the ground floor of your project with residential units and active uses and putting parking up above that. I was just curious how you're treating the openings, the fenestration on the second level where your parking is.
Yeah, so we're open to ideas there. It'd be nice to cover all of the windows or all the openings. We do need air to build a flow in and out, so we're open to different ideas, whether it's some sort of grate system or, but we want, we wanted to make, we want it to look nice, whether we.
And then, as well as, we added that amenity deck, that layout, which is also requested by the Design Review Committee on the third floor.
Mr. Godfrey, will you have an onsite manager to this complex?
Yes.
And house security done? Do you have cameras and things like that in the facility?
Yeah. We plan on having cameras. There'll be a key fob system. Actually, if you look at the unit that's next to the elevator, those units, starting on the third floor all the way up to the seventh, those elevator access points will actually enter into that unit for those penthouses. So there'll be a two-door elevator.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Mr. Jones?
Go ahead. Sorry. No, go for it.
Sorry. Can you explain what coupling of the park, parking fee and the rent? What, how does that work?
Yeah. So as far as I understand, then we would, our covered parking spaces in the garage, we would charge for that. Lot of, lot of projects nowadays, parking is so expensive to build, that they'll charge their tenants, even if it's uncovered. A lot of times, you'll see property managers charge, or landlords charge for parking spaces.
So if I don't have a car, my rent is $25 less?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Jones, what we found when we wrote that ordinance was that people would try to save that parking fee and just park their car in the street. So the ordinance said, we'd like you to couple those together, so that people aren't encouraged to go park somewhere else.
Oh, so you couldn't. So you couldn't do that? What I said, if I don't have a car, then my rent is less?
I think that's okay. I think what's not, what is a problem is if they do have a car, charging it so that they're, they're then encouraged to park somewhere else.
Okay. So that would be a management issue, to make sure that those who have cars are being charged for the parking fee, even though they park on the street like they're not supposed to?
Yeah. I guess if they wanted to park on the street in spite of paying for their parking, they could do that.
Yeah. Okay. In the, in the plan, you're showing that certain spaces are dedicated for carpool, and others are dedicated for charging stations, so you have to have an electric car. Is the management allowed to turn those into conventional spaces if there's no demand for that type of parking?
I mean, I would think so. That would be, that'd be up to you guys. If we have no one that has an electrical vehicle, then it doesn't make sense for it to always sit empty, right? But that would be up to you guys, I think, on your, what, how you guys view that.
But those dedicated spaces are the basis for you applying for reduced parking spaces?
Correct. Yeah. So I mean, we, we're gonna have it dedicated for electric vehicle, but if there's no electric vehicles, then it wouldn't make sense to sit empty.
But to me, the important part would be that it's improved to be able to plug a vehicle in.
Yeah.
If they happen to not have any electrical vehicles, I really don't care if they use it for standard cars, but if somebody does move in with an electrical vehicle, then it's set up to accommodate that.
So that's a management issue?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And who are, what is your target for the renters? Students, retired people?
This would be more young professionals. The hospitals nearby, we see nurses, doctors, potentially professors at either of the universities. There's a lot of Class A office space that's in the works, so we see, hopefully, some good tech companies, some other companies coming into downtown Provo. I think we'll need a lot of young professional housing.
So this is, your target is not necessarily a retired couple?
Totally open to it.
Who are likely not going to ride bicycles?
Yeah. We're looking more at young professionals.
Okay. That makes sense. All right.
I'm gonna move in.
He wants the penthouse. The elevator.
Mr. Rowan?
Unless I missed it, I didn't see kind of list of the materials that are being used. Have you slid that out? That out? Looks like it might have changed, you know, between the plans. The one that we got in our staff report was brick. The other one looked more like more granites, kind of blocks.
Yeah. Before, it was polished concrete. It still is a polished concrete. It's just the, we changed the design slightly and the color. There's a materials board right there.
Oh, there we are.
And Josh, you might want to know, though you're showing stucco there at the Design Review Committee, it was, it was more of a smooth finished stucco, not the.
Correct.
Kind of rough, chunky stucco.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Mr. Jones?
It's probably in your plan, but I didn't see it. Is there a place for a barbecue or any kind of, what's in your amenities?
Yeah. So we have quite a bit of amenities on the first floor, which includes a clubhouse, conference room. And then on the third floor, if you go on the third floor right there, we have artificial grass putting green, a fire pit, barbecue grill, so a variety of amenities there.
Well, I guess I missed it. That's pretty extensive. That, that looks really nice.
This wasn't, this wasn't in our. That's right. Plan. That wasn't in your package.
Okay.
Yeah. I sent this over to Aaron just a couple hours ago.
That looks like a fun place.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Godfrey?
I really like where they have placed this, because your views to the east and to the south are gonna be great. So I'd like that they've put that on that corner.
All right. If not, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Are there any members of the, any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? I see none. Any members of public who would like to speak to this item? Also none. So I will turn it back over to the Commissioners for questions, discussion.
I'm prepared to make a motion if.
I think Mr. Anderson has a question.
A quick one. Okay. The TDM. This is the second project, so still pretty new. I guess my question is, relative to going from one project to another, is there value in considering some type of premeditated scale? So for example, if you have 20 bicycle spaces, therefore you get a reduction of X number of required parking spaces, or something like that. So it's a little less, I don't want to say arbitrary, but so there's a little less discretion, maybe.
So it's a little vague. It's a little, a little less vague.
It's more clear and predictable for an applicant and us as well.
Yeah. The way the ordinance was written originally, the way you're applying it right now, is pretty open and vague. If you would like, as these go forward, we can start coming up with some type of more quantitative analysis, if you would like, and start plugging that in. We knew when we wrote this that it was going to be largely kind of feeling our way along at the beginning.
Yeah.
To see how we would apply it, but we'd be happy to do that as the staff, if that's a recommendation you would make.
And kind of, the ultimate goal for me would be to have it just black and white, right? If you do X, you get Y, period, and so forth. There's that thought that I had, and then the other one, the electric vehicle charging opportunities. I almost think those should be mandatory these days in a project with this number of units and that kind of a thing. And I think that definitely is an amenity. I'm glad to hear that they're including it. But, and I think with the parking numbers, frankly, they're close enough, so I don't have a concern with that. But giving somebody a parking reduction for that, for me, doesn't seem like, you know, necessarily, that in and of itself is not gonna lead to a reduced demand for parking, but that's all that I had, so.
Any other comments from the Commissioners? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, but before I do so, my staff report has 67 unit, and I know that you read in 68 unit. Is it?
67.
67. Okay. All right. I'd like to propose that we approve the Josh Godfrey's request for a project plan approval for a 67-unit apartment building with one commercial unit located at 40 North Freedom Boulevard in the general downtown zone. And include in my, in my motion that the architectural alignment requested by the DRC be ultimately approved by the DRC.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. All those in favor of approval of item one?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Well, we unanimously approve item one. Thank you very much.
So what's happening to, is this where the chip store is? Is that, am I remembering that right?
They are, they are on our property, yes.
Right. So they'll have to relocate somewhere.
Yes. You broke some hearts with that.
Do we have a motion to?
It's a chocolate chip cookie.
I move we adjourn. Madam Chairman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rowan. We're adjourned.